Hi, this is the chair. I'm going to call the Mashpee Public Schools Business Meeting Agenda for September 22nd, 2021 to order. It's 5:30 PM. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. And next, we need to ratify tonight's agenda.
I move that we ratify the agenda as published.
All right. Motion by Don. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Matt. Any discussion? All right. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay. Now we have time for public comment. Do we have any? We don't have any public comment here in the room, so is there anything on the Zoom?
No, there's not.
Okay. Great. We're ahead of schedule already. Okay. So next, we're approving the minutes from August 11th and August 25th. Does anyone have any edits or substantive changes to these?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes from August 11th, 2021.
And do you want to amend your motion to include the 25th? There are two sets.
I think we should vote on this one first.
Okay.
Two separate ones maybe.
All right. A motion for August 11th. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on the August 11th minutes?
No discussion.
Great. I'll call for the vote. Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So the August 11th School Committee Meeting Minutes are approved. August 25th, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve August 25th, 2021, the meeting minutes.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion by Brian, second by Matt. Any discussion?
Just a quick one.
We'll call for the vote. Can someone let Kathy in?
Yeah.
Matt?
I'd say yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. So now we are on Skylar. Skylar, would you mind coming up here?
No.
It's just awkward because you're way back there and...
It's a bit of a personal...
Yeah. Otherwise, we have to watch the TV to look at you. Thank you.
That would be funny. Well, good evening. Our students are back in action, full-time at school and have been for the past few weeks, which comparing it to last year with hybrid is definitely a lot nicer. Some clubs and activities are hard at work with student government, Key Club, Health Occupation Students of America, which is HOSA over at the high school, Human Rights Club, Math Honors Society is getting started with tutoring, and so there's a lot kicking up in these first couple of weeks. Athletics are in full swing too, and us athletes are very grateful to have a more normal fall season, especially those of us that play outdoor sports, because last year we played masks and the games, the rules of the game were all different, but this year it's a lot more normal, which is really nice. There's been a great support at the football games, which is another really nice return to normalcy that we didn't get to have as much last year. And anytime that you open the Kibb Cod Times, there's so many of our student athletes in there between volleyball and girls soccer, boys soccer, football. It's so awesome, and there's so many of them because we have so many talented student athletes at our school. We're operating on all levels, middle school, JV, and varsity, which is really great. We have a lot of kids playing in between, and so we love having so much fun with just all the extracurriculars too. Senior Owen Balfour announced his commitment to play Division III college lacrosse at Emerson College in Boston next year, so huge congratulations to him. It's always really cool when people go off to play their sports in college. Seniors are trying to make the most of our senior year. One thing that we did was senior sunrise, which is a tradition we hope to leave, where we all met up at South Cape Beach and we watched the sunrise together before school on a Friday, and then we went out to breakfast together, and it was just really nice trying to make some more shared memories with what we can this year. Our class plans to face paint at Oktoberfest as a fundraiser, so if you're there and if you have some kids, make sure to come by and leave us a donation because it'll help us out. We're planning our senior projects, and so if there's any needs that you guys recognize, like I know, like I know a lot about what's going on, but so do you, obviously, and so any needs that you have, any ideas about senior projects for, if you could come to me, come to Consuelo, come to Ms. Kent, because the more that we can do that's continuous in Mashpee is pretty cool, like leaving those legacy projects, which are supposed to be service-based, but they can also be interest-based, based on the senior, and so there's a lot to do there. Ms. Ha's tech and engineering class is making laser engraved signs both for students and for the school store, and I've been to the school store since freshman year, I still work there, and so having the student projects really does make a big difference, and having that connection is really cool. Mr. Hop, who's the science teacher, science director, held a beach cleanup last Saturday at South Cape Beach that some Mashpee students went to, which was really cool. If you've been to the high school in the past couple of days, you've probably seen the huge wooden board and then all of the rope he found, all this, like him and the people who went found all this stuff in the ocean, and so it was so good that they got all of it out. So just us combining science with service, which is pretty cool. The Mashpee girls soccer team is coaching the youth soccer teams once again, which is so fun. We've done it for years, and it's a great way to get to know the future of our school district and our school programs. I mean, I love it because I'll be, I'll go in the morning and I'll coach at Heritage, and then I work at the Mashpee store all day after, and the kids come in that I just coached with their parents, trying to buy Mashpee gear so that they can support them at their games. And so it's really cool just having this like small community tie through soccer and in so many other ways. The teen map activists held a mapathon on Monday night virtually for anyone who was interested, and they hold a lot of these, which are really cool, and it helps to make students more aware of the world around them as well as their impact on it. And mapping, it's like mostly led by Ms. Reynolds and Ms. Purdy, but it's pretty interesting, and so it's something that I want to pursue, and I think it's pretty cool when they have like these kinds of special events. Another thing is every year we do 9/11 tribute service, and Hannah Rogers was our ambassador, who's now a freshman, that led it over the summer, and she did an excellent job. Like she collected enough donations and it fell out my car. It was so exciting, and she was so proud, and I don't know if you saw it in the newspaper, but she was in the Mashpee Enterprises too, and she just collected so many awesome things. And then myself and a couple other people from the Cape and then from Mass, we all met up in Boston on 9/11, like we usually do, and we got to make hair packages with all of the stuff that people donated from around the state, and that was stuff like wipes and bug spray wipes and almonds and playing cards and a bunch of stuff like that for veterans and active service members. And we also got to make Annie's Kindness blankets, which we had done a little bit earlier with a bunch of different people on Cape, but it's those kind of blankets where you have the two layers of felt and then you cut and tie, and we were sending those off to veterans in homeless shelters around Boston, like in Chelsea and that area. And so that was a really great day of service, another really good return to normalcy. And then I do have another part in my report, just because I don't know which questions address, like I know some of these things are school committee related, some might be like Mr. Balaschachi and principal related, some might be superintendent related, but our, our class and then like student body, we just had some kind of questions and like things that we wanted to ask about. So one of them is that last year we were able to eat lunch outside, and then I know we've been like talking about it, but I was just kind of wondering what the stance is on that before it starts to get cold again. I didn't know who to ask.
I think that's a marked question.
Yeah, I think it would be Mr. Balaschachi.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
What does that like look like compared to last year when we could and then we couldn't last year and then be like...
(Inaudible). So since we get the approval, we're going to be out there in the masks and facing one another. The seating issue too, there's only about five tables, they keep you apart and we face in the same direction. If we get approval, we're not going to do that.
Okay. Because I know in years, but like I know COVID obviously changes everything, but like I know in years before it was like a senior thing, and then with COVID, it was kind of like whoever wanted to outside at lunch, and so it was like a senior thing to like mitigate the amount of people. Like I don't know if that makes it any easier, if it's like really just like approval based with COVID. It's mostly that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And approval from whom, Mark?
Oh, Nurse Stacy and Officer Williams, if you don't do that, I don't want to find any issues for anybody that are going to make any errors, especially with, you know, the seriousness of COVID, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's safety first.
So, you know, we're doing all the seniors, we're calling all the people out there.
Yeah.
So whether we can do it, we're certainly going to do that.
Okay. Another thing was being able to get extra help from teachers in directed study, like even if, I know we're trying to mitigate the amount of people that go like back and forth between classrooms, but even if they like wore, like we wore our masks in school, like obviously we wear masks when we're in those extra help rooms or like, even if you, like I get not wanting people to be wandering the hallways and like really having that track, like I totally get that, but if we like got a pass from our teacher and then what got to get extra help? Because like I know you see it too, like in directed study, like if you don't have anything to do, people are just sitting there, but a lot of kids need that extra help, and so is there anything we can do about that?
I know I was going to introduce you tonight. These are all good questions, so I'm going to process right now working with teachers to create a form that will be able to get a pass from that teacher ahead of time, you have to go to homeroom report, and then that teacher will then fill out a form of all the students who were present in their respective room during period A, so I hope to have that up in writing by the end of next week.
Okay.
Yeah, and the only, just to add to that, we have to look at the number of students that might be in a homeroom that you might be going to that teacher for extra help.
Yeah.
And then there also is the option of zooming with that teacher like last year and doing, doing that connection that way as well. So we are working on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be awesome. Thank you, I appreciate that. Another one, it's not as much of a question, but something that we've noticed is that parents are trying to dodge the pickup lines, and so they park either in the senior student parking lot to pick up their kids, or they park behind the school, and it's a problem for the seniors who, and I'm sure, like I don't know as much about with the junior lot, but it's a problem for the seniors because they're parking in the spots and then they're pulling out and going in different directions than we are, and so they're like, it's already pretty congested in there, but they're going in different directions, making it even more congested. And then when we try to pull from the student senior parking lot into the back to park for sports, there's parents who are waiting for their kids in there, trying to dodge the line, so they're taking up all the parking spots, and then within five minutes, they're gone, but all the students had to park so far away, who are, as athletes, and so I don't really know if there's anything that can really be done about that, but I just wanted to raise the attention for it because it's kind of a problem for us.
So I mean, obviously, Principal Balaschachi can do a communication to families. We can also have an adult out there around that time to prevent that from happening, and then once, we tend to train parents. We can do that. We could also sort of put students only during a certain, you know, period of time signs, but yes, people are very creative in trying to avoid the line. We do have a lovely option of buses.
We do.
I will say in, just a word from old parents. I was up there today for the first time in the back fields because my daughter had a game, and there were a lot of sports going on, and there was no parking spaces to be found, and I'm sure some of those were students and some were parents, but the bottom line is we're all kind of in the same boat.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're not walking, then I'm walking, and if I'm not walking, then you're walking, so.
Like, I totally get that.
I'm sure it evens out.
I get that for games, it's just like when we're starting to practice and parents are just like wait, because they're gone in five minutes. Like if you parked to watch your, your student, like obviously that's important, but it's people who are just going and leaving that like...
Yeah, I'm just...
Our operations are about nine to 10 minutes to clear the whole campus from dismissal to all the buses and cars out, but it's pretty efficient. We need to put some barriers up, they could look at that, but...
A students only would be awesome.
(Inaudible).
Yeah.
Well, and the other thought too, is if you have a practice, can you not move to the back for five or eight minutes?
Like all the spots are gone, like that's the, that's the thing, it's like a rush for the spot.
Because they're all, the students are all trying to get a spot?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a whole, that's a layer two. We'll look at that.
Yeah, and I know the, I mean, I used, like my dad used to, my parents dropped me off in the line, like that line at the beginning of school day, we all know it's a, it's a long line, but. Another thing was, we just kind of like, as we're planning for the end of our senior year, we just kind of wanted to get an idea of like some things that we can and can't do, like when we're planning for senior week and like day trips, like if there's any restrictions we already know we're going to have from like you guys, or if like even like a class trip, like an overnight, if that's out of the picture, or if that's a possibility, like we just kind of wanted to get some guidelines before we start really planning into stuff.
Well, I think for COVID world, it's almost like a week by week basis. I'm certainly hoping that by the first week of June, when you would be having senior week, that we are not in the same situation we are now, so that many opportunities would be there for your senior class. So we'll just have to keep monitoring, I think, as we go.
Yeah, these are all building bases, so feel free to, you have the class office reach out, book a meeting, ask me these questions, and I can, so you have to remember, that's a, that's a big decision.
Okay. Yeah, some of these things, like I just don't know what's like a you question and what's a everybody question, so.
(Inaudible).
Okay, yeah, we could, we could coordinate that. All righty, well, that was mostly everything, so thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Does anybody...
Yeah.
So I have a question for you. So there's been discussion at various times in regard to the athletic fields and the practice fields and changing those over to artificial turf.
Oh, yeah.
What do you and the students think about that?
Um, I think that, I mean, I know there's a financial part of it and a time part, but all of the other teams that we play have turf, and so they're used to playing at that faster pace, and so like we adapt to it, like as athletes we adapt, but it would be an advantage for us to have it, but would it like take a lot of time? Like I know you can't just like do it in one night, like the time to transfer over and like take out the fields and then make them turf, like what does the timeline kind of look like on that?
Uh, any kind of transition like that would try to be timed over the summer when school's not in session, so it wouldn't be during the school year, hopefully.
Unfortunately, it wouldn't probably benefit the seniors directly. It would benefit potentially future classes, but I was curious to see, I didn't realize that every school you played against already had turf and Mashpee was an outlier?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that would be awesome if we entered.
Any other questions for Skylar? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add a comment that I really wish I had Skylar's report like a week ago when I write my article for the Enterprise, because I don't know many of the things that she shared out, so you do an awesome job. Thank you.
Email.
Okay, yes. Email me at four in the morning.
(Inaudible) like two days before.
Okay. That might not help me.
I don't have to leave.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, honey. So next on the agenda, we have the report from the tribe. I don't see anybody on the Zoom. There's nobody here. Do we have any expectation that someone's going to be here tonight?
I don't, I don't, I don't remember if I personally reached out to remind them of this meeting, so.
Okay.
If they're not here, it's probably on me.
All right. Well, we'll just skip over that if somebody, just keep an eye out for Cameron or anybody online there. All right. Nurse, I can't even call you Nurse Stacy or the district health coordinator. Stacy, would you, you're up.
Good evening. You can call me Nurse Stacy, everybody's to us.
Okay.
Not a problem. So hello, everyone. Things are moving along overall. My special thanks and shout out to families and staff and kids for being mindful, staying home when sick, reporting when they don't feel well. That is really working very well. I know it's a lot, but I am very grateful for that. You have, I believe, the updated COVID dashboard handout in your pocket, and I know it's on the website on the new web page, on the health services page.
And just interrupt for one second.
Sure.
You have the more up-to-date one in the little list of four papers I handed you, yes, so you might want to refer to that one.
Thank you. So as you can see for September, we've had five cases at Mashpee High, seven Quash, four at Coos, for a total of 16, with 76 close contacts and five staff close contacts. We, as you know, monitor this on a daily, seven day a week surveillance.
Stacy, can I, can I ask you to hold on for one second?
Sure.
I'm just going to turn this mic off because we're getting a, getting an echo. See if that helps. All right.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So we're, as I was saying, we're monitoring this seven days a week, active surveillance. We're making adjustments to practices to see where we can keep our close contacts down as best able, still with meeting our students' needs, but again, everyone's doing a really great job with that. So then you have the staff information. I don't need to read, I know all the lines to you, but does anybody have any questions on the data dashboard or where that stands at this time?
Stacy, it's Don. How many of our cases are breakthrough cases?
So honestly, because of our, we haven't seen any breakthrough cases in students, but actually, I'm sorry, stand corrected. We've had two students that have been either partially or fully vaccinated, and as far as staff, they've all actually shared that they've been vaccinated.
Does that concern you?
So again, from a public health perspective, the goal of vaccination has been and continues to be to risk reduce for severity, hospitalizations, and death. So vaccines are working as we anticipated them. We are very aware that there's the new variant. It's a piece of the mitigating measure, but it is obviously, just like with flu vaccine, doesn't mean you can't get it. The trends that we're seeing are not anything that we weren't anticipating with vaccination rollout from the beginning.
All right. May I ask a question, Don, or are you still?
Go ahead.
I've seen a few districts push out information about their vaccination rates as a way to encourage, you know, any stragglers to get vaccinated because DUCI has put out that threshold that if we, you know, have a certain vaccination rate that we may not have to mask. Is that something that we're going to do as a district? And are we going to be sharing that data?
So I can share the data where we stand as of the 16th of September, so it's updated every Thursday. DUCI on the call last week actually might be making a shift from even using that data, so I think more is to come. There's another meeting tomorrow and then next week when they kind of finalize if that October 1st date that they had thrown out there is going to come to fruition. But as of right now, and you have to remember as was shared at last meeting, the Mashpee, the data for the town of Mashpee, not every student attends Mashpee Public Schools, and then we also have students who are school choice that may not show up in this data. So if we look at the mass.gov data that's out there, in our 12 to 15-year-old population of 557, 557 students or in that 12 to 15, 337 are fully vaccinated with at least one dose, sorry, not fully, are vaccinated with at least one dose, or 61% of at least one dose. And in our 16 to 19-year-olds, and you have to remember, our, most of our kids are 16 to 18, in that 585 students or individuals in that age range, 442 are at least one dose, and that's 76%. But again, it's really hard to get these to really reflect exactly what's in our individual schools based on how data is tracked. You know, DUCI's watching it, so I think more will follow for what DUCI's going to do with that, if they're going to even be able to use that as a criteria.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, is there a question behind me?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought I heard Matt. Yes, Don.
So Stacy, that 80% requirement, does that also include the administration and faculty? I thought it did.
So it does. And then, and again, last week's call, DUCI was more looking towards for students and maybe splitting it out, so I think we'll hear more after this week for what they're going to actually be looking at, if anything.
You have a feeling that they may do away with that?
Um, it's kind of, I really don't, I can't speak for them, but just given that again, as we've been saying all along with COVID, masks are a mitigating measure, it's a piece of the puzzle. We have current new variant, we have Delta, and the new variants are coming, they're in 49 states. I, I think it might be premature to try to remove things that might be another piece to our puzzle. And again, we're not a full month in school, changing our variables for us to know what is what. Now might not be the time. That might be what we hear from Department of Public Health and DUCI, but I can't speak for them, but I won't be surprised if there's a little shift, just given what we're seeing for trends and community spread in all of our communities.
No, I appreciate your opinion and I think it makes sense, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Stacy, is our, in terms of our vaccination rate for staff, is that a fairly static number at this point, or are you continuing to see additional staff get vaccinated?
So I, I can confidently say that anybody who wants a vaccine or needs a plan for a vaccine, or everybody has access to a vaccine, so we are still seeing people become vaccinated whether things change or life circumstances, so it's a fluid situation, but everybody that needs or wants a vaccine has had it.
And what are you estimating our percentage vaccinated of staff at?
I honestly can't speak to that because there, we don't require, and then we're not, you know, I, I, but if I gave you a number, it would not be an accurate number because I don't request that data at this time, it's not required.
Okay.
But more, I can tell you that honestly, more back, more staff are back, most are, most people, many, anybody who wants it is, and it's a, it's a tool that many people are taking advantage of.
Any other questions for Stacy?
Yeah. Stacy, Stacy, this is Brian. With the data that you've shown, is there any way that we can see if any of the ones that have tested positive have been vaccinated?
So, um, yes, that's what I, when I'm, sorry, if I weren't clear. So for staff that have tested positive, they all have been vaccinated, or at least shared that they were, and for students, I am aware of two students, one may have been, was partially vaccinated, one was full.
Okay.
We also have to remember, our, our positive students, we don't break it down by age.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, it's, it's a little discouraging that we've got a 10%, you know, 10% of our staff have tested positive, and it's only September. But I agree with you in terms of, you know, the, the overall, the goal of the vaccine is we can't eliminate cases altogether, but, uh, okay. I don't know where we were last year at this time, do you?
So I actually did, because you guys know I like my data too, and I pulled our last year data dashboard, and we actually didn't start it till October, but for the beginning of October, we were two Mashpee High School positive, one Quash, for a total of three, with 18 close contacts and one staff. And again, that's the beginning, that's October, and we didn't start till September 16th, I believe, so we're kind of mixing apples and oranges, and for staff, we didn't have any staff positives until December. So again, not to be Debbie Downer, but you know, I mean, between variants and what we're seeing, we also are in a different picture than we were in this time last year.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Nicole, you just said it was discouraging that 10% of our staff tested positive?
That's what I heard you say.
Well, because I, I don't remember that number being so high last year.
Well, we've only had nine staff members test positive, so we have 260-ish employees.
Oh, I'm sorry, I must be reading this wrong. I see, oh, I apologize, well, I don't know.
So we've had 29 total positive cases.
Oh, that's what I was referring to.
Twenty of which are students and nine are staff.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, that, that's not very clear. There's no total for staff here, I see.
Yeah, the blue line is the total for staff.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was just assuming it was, I was looking at the bottom number. All right, yes.
Yeah, we could change that if you want the totals.
Thank you, nine is much better than 29. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I thought it was my math because I'm tired, sorry.
No, I appreciate, now, now I'm, I'm more oriented to this chart now, thank you.
And I don't know, Stacy, if you wanted to sort of give an update on where we're at with testing and staffing, to-do testing and materials from the state and all of that lovely situation.
Sure, so as I shared in August, we applied for test and stay and pool testing now known as COVID safety checks. We have had, as of today, a fourth program coordinator signed to Mashpee. She has connected with me again today to let me know that they are still working on staffing, supplies are back ordered through the state. So we did go through this weekend and send out the consent online. I am aware that it is beyond our control for how we can register through this new portal. So it is consent at this time for COVID safety checks, although you are also consenting to test and stay, should that be an option. But again, that'll be an individualized option.
Stacy, can I just interrupt for one second? When you just said we have our fourth coordinator, just to be clear, that's only one individual. It's just everyone else has quit up to this point, and so now we're on our fourth one. And we haven't even started. There's a staffing issue across the state with all of these programs. Sorry.
No worries, thank you. I know it in my head, my apologies. So we sent out the link. We have, as of this morning, 104 people interested. It seems to be pretty much split in the 30s for each school for COVID safety weekly checks. I had anticipated, having already started, then we pushed it to hoping for the 28th after my call today. It honestly probably won't happen till October. I'm, again, working on it on a daily basis with brainstorming with them and seeing that they did let us know again that the supplies that were supposedly shipped are no longer available. And it seems, again, as Patty just said, across the state, everyone is having this challenge. The test and stay, they announced today that they are no longer able to provide staffing for test and stay program. And they're supposed to give us more information in a call tomorrow about how that's going to roll out and what some options may be. Again, test and stay is for if you're identified as a close contact, zero to three and not vaccinated. So we have made a decision, administrative team, schools, everybody wise, to work hard at, and all along, but really tightening up our, minimizing our zero to three exposure. So I'm hoping that test and stay wouldn't even be something that we needed to rely on. And we're seeming to do a really much, a great job with that. So hopefully that, this won't impact us, as it seems to be in other districts. And again, people staying home when they're sick, because we are seeing flu in the community, strep in the community and RSV. So respiratory synovial virus, which is very, you know, spreads quickly and contagious and presents just like COVID. So obviously, we don't want anybody in school that has any of these viral illnesses because we want to keep everybody healthy in school. So that's where we stand for testing. Hopefully I'll have more information when we meet again in October, if not sooner in Patty's updates.
So Stacy, it's Don. So I have a question, I guess, in regard to test and stay. So that's focused on the non-vaccinated students. What happens to the vaccinated students that are in that group?
Sure, so if you are a vaccinated individual at this time, again, subject to change, but per CDC, if you are a vaccinated individual identified as a close contact, zero to six feet, you do not need to quarantine, you do not test. The guidance right now still says three to five. However, most of our DPH calls in the last week are advising days five to seven if you're fully vaccinated, but not daily asymptomatic testing. Because again, if you're vaccinated, you will probably be either an asymptomatic positive individual or not show that you are positive or develop symptoms till after day five. So test and stay does not apply to someone who's vaccinated for that reason, because it's an antigen test when you're zero to three and you're not vaccinated. It's assumed that you would have a higher viral load as an unvaccinated zero to three close contact. And if you're vaccinated, you won't. And that has been consistent in how this program came out with the data that we accumulated from last year and what we did and didn't see in schools. So that is consistent with the practice and why that program came out. And one of the other challenges and needs for test and stay was since we were all back in, many schools are not even able to keep the three to six foot distance, which again, in Mashpee, we're fortunate that that is something we're able to do fairly consistently across the district. Obviously, there's other special needs situations, but we are at three to six. So we are actually not seeing the need for even a test to stay type of option as our surrounding districts are.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Stacy, is there any incentives for the students or anyone that does the testing?
So again, test and stay is, you'd be identified as a close contact, zero to three. So, you know, you really don't want to participate. So our incentive is following the three to six in our guidelines and staying home or sick. So I think that's a good incentive. And then we are obviously communicating about the COVID safety checks. I'm hoping that once that gets up and running, just like we saw last year, kids will see other kids doing it and want to participate that way and be motivated that way.
Okay, I feel like with the pool testing or something, we can do stuff to give them incentives, whether it's homework passes or Falcon tickets or something. I think we can be creative to get more students to participate.
I will defer that to administrative team and whatever we can do, online board.
Yeah, we'll explore that, that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. We appreciate it.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too.
All right, next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent.
So first on the list is some professional development that has taken place since the last meeting. On August 18th, Voices from the First Light Native Learning Styles was a PD opportunity provided by the tribe at no cost to the district. And it was an outstanding full day of learning done in a really creative way. And I know that all the participants were left excited with what they learned and also hopeful that more of our members would have that opportunity. So I just want to express my gratitude to the tribes, specifically to Roxanne and her team for really a well-thought-out and executed day that was very enjoyable as well as informative. And we also had the pleasure of having Dr. Adolf Brown speak to our staff on day two of the first two days when they were back. And then lucky enough that he was able to stay for the next day. And he, in addition to doing grades 11 and 12, was able to stay and do grades nine and 10. And he just has really powerful messages geared towards specific audiences. And I know, speaking from someone who was able to observe all three, there were definitely takeaways from his presentation that hopefully will inspire us all sort of to be a better version of ourselves. And so we're very grateful for the district supporting that PD. Convocation, which was planned for August 30th, I believe, we ended up switching it to a virtual plan because of some things on the weekend and some staff members not being super comfortable with the idea of being all in one place. And so it actually worked out well. And I just want to express gratitude to those who spoke and joined us. Cheyenne Hendricks sang the National Anthem and she's phenomenal. Our chair, Nicole Bartlett, gave a really powerful message. Select Board member David Whedon also spoke. Mary Stickley, our association president, spoke. Then we had the class officers and individually speaking was Skylar Rimple and Cheyenne Hendricks. And Aisha Shaffey, she's not a class officer, but she also individually spoke. Consuelo Carroll gave really good information about her role and how she can really help teachers. And then we had a student panel and there were three prompts for those students. And we had two sixth grade representatives, Colton Baker and Greenlee Davis. And we had two from the middle school, actually brothers, Alex and Paul DeHaleen. And then two other class officers from the senior class, Megan Burnett and Miley Beal represented the high school side of the school. And they were very informative in terms of their messaging to our teachers. And then our closing speaker was Michael Prino. And if you haven't had a chance to watch the recording, he is very inspirational. He is now a senior. He's traveled all his years through Mashpee and he is one of the most inspiring people you ever want to meet. And if you haven't met him yet, make sure you connect with me and I'll make sure you get an opportunity to do so because he is truly inspiring. And so that was convocation. And next in the agenda, anybody have questions on any of that? Okay. Next, we have the enrollment, which you have the sheet, it's page eight in your packet. And we have, and this was, this is, you know, unofficial data as of last Friday, we have 374 students at Coombs and 20 of those are school choice students. At Quashnet, we have 423 students and 31 choice students. At Mashpee Middle School, we have 237 students and 25 of those are choice. And then at the high school, we have 453 students in grades nine through 12 and 48 of those students are choice. So the total enrollment is 1,487 and 124 of those are choice. And just so you know, current grades that are closed to school choice are grades K, one, three, five, six, and 11 and 12. That is listed on our website for anyone who's interested in choicing in. We didn't even have grades 11 and 12 open for choice this year because it's just not a great time for transitioning, although we do allow someone who's been with us prior to, if their family moves out, we don't want them to have to finish their high school career in another school setting if it's their choice to stay. You'll see in the next box or the next table, the 21, 22 homeschooled students is 28. The students attending Cape Tech is 42. And Sturgis attendees is 39 this year. And we have two prior years of data there as well. And then school choice, the data for past years is coming from the DUCY website. And so they look at kids who come and go, so you're going to get those decimals showing there, but you have that data as well. And then the third chart down is the special education. And September 2021, students with IEPs is 239 compared to a year ago, there was 249. And then in June, there was 249. And then we have added at the bottom of the chart below, the official enrollment as of October 1 for the 2021 school year is there. Any questions? Okay. Next is, or second page related to school choice, because I think Mr. Myers had asked for sort of a historical perspective. This is also from DUCY, so it goes back to 2018. It's a little bit of a different presentation, but you can see where the students are coming from. You can also see where some of our Mashpee kids are choicing out to. And then in the very top of this chart, you see the monetary value associated with the ins and the outs.
Patty, so if I'm looking at this correctly, then in, on the first line, Barnstable in 2021, this is a school year, right? So this is the 20.
This is last year.
2021 school year. They received 48 of our students?
No, no, we received 48 kids from Barnstable and we sent them 4.71.
Gosh.
You kept a piece of one here.
And so the, the partial kid is because of the time of the school year? It's like a.
Yes. Yeah, sometimes they don't come at the very beginning or sometimes they, there are different reasons for it being parsed out like that.
Gotcha. So, and this is something that we've looked at in the past. And what I, what I find really interesting, and I think I made this point, I think I got this data originally from the collaborative, but is that, you know, we tend to think of, we tend to talk about like how we lose students and, and mostly we're sharing public students with other public districts because, you know, maybe their family lives in a different place or they, I mean, like if, so we're, so 50 of our kids going out are going to Falmouth and another 30 are going to Sandwich. And we only have 100 plus leaving the district, right?
Right, that, those numbers down below tie up to that 107.88, or it should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we find a lot of our students who choice in are looking for a fresh start for whatever sort of, a lot of times it's a social aspect of schooling that's not fitting well for them in their previous one. I'm not sure of how many are actually, and they, and they, some of them tend to know someone in Mashpee already as well, some do not. I don't, we, we have conversations generally more with the upper, the high school students who want to choice in to find out their reasoning. We meet with those families. So I'm not sure, we have not done a survey to see if it's programming or anything else that's attracting students to Mashpee. And oftentimes, it is families who had been in Mashpee who then relocated and they want to stay.
And can you tell me what MAVA and TECHA are?
Yes, MAV, well.
Maybe online.
Yeah, TECHA is an online school.
Okay.
That we pay the tuition, don't we have to pay the full tuition for kids to choose?
Correct. Okay.
And what does MAVA stand for?
Massachusetts.
Something video, something academy or.
So it's another, just those are.
It's another option, it's an online option.
But that's different than someone being homeschooled?
Yes.
It's a public option, okay. I never heard, heard of those.
It's the Massachusetts Virtual Academy, a free field, common law, virtual district.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I find this interesting, but I guess one question I have is, because I thought the dollar amount of, was fixed per student.
But you can recover some extraordinary expenses related to special education, so you're not ever going to match up exactly 5,000 per student? And it's also can be divided based on partial year?
Okay. So that, the extraordinary expenses may be the reason why in 2021 that we sent out 100, or 687,000 for, for 100, let's call it eight students, but only received 654,000 for 114?
You're correct.
Okay.
And also because the online schools cost more than the $5,000?
That's true too.
Oh, they do. Okay. That's interesting.
So this raises a question for me, Ashley. So the, the perception, so when do we, when does the, the sending money, does that come off the top from our, the cherry sheet before? Like, do we ever see that money? Or do we actually get it and then have to move it?
No, we don't ever receive it. It gets sorted out through the state. It's on the town side.
Right.
Never flows through the schools. Like we receive our school choice receiving money. I see that in our account, that's something that the schools manage. We don't have anything to do with the sending money.
Right. Okay. If you want a tutorial on this, Matt, Brian, Kathy, if you're, have any more questions, Ashley is the expert. I remember Mr. Funk gave me a nice indoctrination when I started and it was very helpful. So, important because they're, the town thinks of the school choice funds as kind of additional money that we get in and, and some people regard it as some kind of slush fund. But it's important to note that we are not receiving money from students that choice out. And that's why we try to do, you know, we don't, we try to keep our numbers so we're not increasing programming. You know, we're sort of like breaking even, I guess, is the way I think about it. Don, do you have any other?
I would just say that, you know, the money we receive in is separate and comes to the school directly versus the money that is sent out for school choice. So that's coming off of the town side and from their budget, very similar to the tech schools where that comes through the town side only. The school member sees those expenditures take place. So, you know, they're seeing the outlays going for these students. And their real question ultimately comes back to, well, you're receiving money for students coming in. In a pure and perfect world, you know, you would offset the two. But that's not how it works. Okay?
Any other questions on that line item?
No, thanks for pulling that together.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Ashley. The personnel updates on page 10, those are just the list of hirees, sort of since we had our last meeting at the top. And there is a little data down below in terms of staffing from 2021 compared to staffing from 21-22. And we are slowly, you know, taking some action steps that are helping in terms of meeting that diversity, equity, and inclusion pillar when it comes to our staffing. So we are trying our very hardest to increase the diversity and have our staff match more accurately with our students, but we have a long way to go, but we're moving in the right direction. And just the other thing that's not on here is the current openings that we have are an administrative assistant at Mashpee Middle High School, an executive administrative assistant at Mashpee Middle High School, and that is because Sheri Vanitsky is coming on board as the executive administrative assistant in my office, October 1st or thereafter. And then we have a paraprofessional opening at Mashpee Middle High School. And just in case you're worrying on that bottom, wondering on the bottom chart, with the employees, we did not grow our employees by 22. The top chart is official from DESI, and the bottom chart, we've included like food services, we've included positions that are part of our team, but they don't get picked up in the DESI reporting. And so recess monitors, bus monitors, food services are still in that bottom number versus why it's different. So I just want everyone to know, we did not add 20 some odd positions to our district this year.
That's important to point out.
Yes.
Also, on this 2021 chart, on the far right, I think there's something incorrect with the percentage of non-white students per DESI? Or is that, is that an incorrect number on DESI's website?
So, the non-white stu-
I don't, I don't believe we all, we went from 6%.
Oh, yeah, that, oh. Yeah, that was an odd number. That is from DESI, but it is, it's because, well, I don't know, I had an answer for that, but now it's out of my brain. That's from DESI, so yes, that does look odd.
But doesn't total to 100 between white and non-white, so that leads me to believe there's-
There's an error there, we'll look at that. Well, and you look down below-
Yeah, exactly.
For this year, and you're like, yeah.
Yeah, obviously, there's something incorrect. Okay.
Okay. Next, you have, oh, start of the school year. And I think what I'll do is I'll let the principals share out for their buildings, and then if I felt like there was anything that didn't get touched on, I would add versus me sort of taking over the show. So I don't know if there's an order that you'd like to go in principals for sharing out how your year started. I think we'll start with the middle child this time, so Principal Brian, would you like to come first? Thank you.
I was just concerned, happy to be in the middle.
Okay, well, we're happy you go first.
I don't know, I think, yeah, I think, I think your sound is pretty good.
And how's it, how is it for Mashpee TV people?
Oh, okay. So just hit the button until it turns blue.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me. Nice. Excited to share about the start of school at Quasnet. We are very busy, we've hit the ground running, actually. We have the construction out front with our new flag poles, I think they look terrific. I love that we are not all concrete out there, it has softened the whole look of the building. And of course, they put the hydro seat down, and then we have this deluge come, but they came today and also re-hydro seeded, so I think it's going to look really great when that's all done, and we're really looking forward to raising the flags. So that's a really nice piece to look forward to. When I was here at the last school committee meeting, I talked about our enrollments and withdrawals, and shared that we had 23 enrollments at that time, and only nine withdrawals, which was unusual, and that was in August. But a huge shout out to Cheryl McIntyre, who is my executive administrative assistant and manages all of the withdrawals and enrollments here at Quasnet. And we are up to 31 enrollments and 23 withdrawals, which is a total of 54 students transitioning, which is really very consistent from what we usually see. It's, it pretty much balances out, but we certainly did have more students come in than, than moved. And so, it's very busy there before schools start. But the one thing I wanted to share, this, this, well, tonight, is really about our music program, I'm very, very excited about it. COVID really took out the music program. Last year, there were about four students who were still in the strings program, and it had been a very robust program with about 175 to 185 students. It just took it out. And of course, parents have to rent instruments, so they turn those instruments in, it was really challenging. But with some creative scheduling and the efforts of our wonderful music staff here at Quasnet, we are back up to 184 musicians here at Quasnet. That does not include chorus, which that other number had. This includes just strings and band. And I actually feel a little sorry for Mrs. Hill and Mrs. Boyd because they're all beginners. So it's even just putting together those instruments, it's going to be a challenge for them this year, but I know they have it in them. Grade four, there are 78 students participating in the program. Grade five, we have 64, and grade six, 42. So it's really come back to life, and we're very excited about that. We hope to have chorus, and that would be an after-school offering, and that's still in the works. But what we have changed this year in terms of the music program is we are doing it during the school day. So during a general music class, students will have lessons. However, during one block per week, grade six will meet as an ensemble for strings and an ensemble for band. And the same with grades five and grade four. And what is beautiful about that is the kids who are participating in the music get that whole 45 minutes of that ensemble time, but do not have to stay after school for it or lose a recess. And that's really important, especially to build that social component for kids too, they need to be outside. The other nice piece about this is we have a group of students who are not participating in band and strings. So what do we do with that? And this was a real, great opportunity to take our other special subject teachers, and they have created these integrated art blocks. So we have three. One is coding, and that's with our STEM teacher and the librarian. And coding has been hard to fit into both the library's special and into STEM. So this allows our students to get real experience with coding. And the other group is cooperative games, and that is with Mrs. Pimental and Mr. Morris, although Mr. Morris is also helping out in the music, he's very, quite a musician. So that has been really great. And then the third integrated arts is artful expressions. And it's like an art therapy piece where we've partnered one of the counselors along with Lauren Richards, who is our art teacher. And so the other students who are not in band and strings will have a rotation each term to go to one of those other specials, so to speak. So they still have their daily special, but this would be one day a week for 45 minutes outside of it. So, so far, we started this week, I'm going to knock, it's going along pretty well, and it's just so nice to have that opportunity to get music back into our school and see that come to life. So, any questions?
Could you just give a brief highlight on what-
[phone ringing]
Anyway, a brief highlight on what the homeroom teachers are doing when their students are at these enrichment integrated blocks.
Absolutely. So, because all of the students by grade level, one day a week, are going to this integrated arts block, it does allow, as a team, myself and my assistant principal, Mr. Kopolka, to meet with that grade level team. And it's really looking at the third pillar of the planning for success, which is to renew MTSS. And we started this week again with that, and it's really, I think, going to give us a great opportunity to bring MTSS back to life here at Quasnet and, and really spend valuable time looking at instruction, curriculum, and the environment, and what we can do to best support our students and really to improve outcomes overall. So we're, I'm very excited about that block. But I have to learn Google Classroom myself, and so I've been working on that. Which has been a good management tool.
Anyone have any questions for Mary Kate?
All right, thank you.
You got three committee members with kids of age out of Quasnet, so you're, you're not going to be in the hot seat as much.
I know, and they all would have loved this music opportunity. So, all right.
A little disappointed we missed that one.
Absolutely.
I'm just happy it's back.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So how about Dr. Gulay, you want to go next?
Good evening. Great, all right. So, like, Quasnet, we are really excited to be back at school. There's a buzz in the building of kids learning, and everyone's working hard, and lots of fun going on, they're happy to see their friends, so it's been really upbeat. And I'm also happy to report that our pickup and drop offline, they're not even an issue this year. Woo-hoo. We had our personal best today at 4:48, every car, every bus was gone.
Would that be 3:48?
Uh, yes.
4:48 would knock you out.
4:48 would be another kind of record.
That's right, that's right, thank you very much. And it's safe and it's efficient, and parents are done taking pictures of their children on their first day and things like that, so it's been moving along. Brian did visit us and dress up as Thunder, the Falcon, and he had a big mask on, which actually covered where his eyes were, so he could see nothing. But the kids, they kept saying it was Mr. Prina, but it was boring. So that was a lot of fun. A couple of things, during lunch, I'm, just started reading to the kids to increase their exposure to some literature. And I'm reading the series of The Magic Treehouse with Jeff Nanny, and you must be familiar with it if you're a parent. And I'm getting lots of interest, so it's been, it's been fun. And they're much quieter when I'm reading. So we were doing that, all of our kids right now are currently being assessed in ELA and math. And when that is complete, we're going to make some data-informed decisions that will best meet their needs, and put them into groups, and start working with them on what they need specifically. Let's see, we had our first PTO meeting, lots of new faces, and Toby Grandrade's parents have made beautiful fall planters, like, you could sell these in a florist's shop, they're, they're beautiful. And they made eight of them and put them around the school, and, and they're just, they just add to the ambiance of the school, they're lovely, so thank you to them. And finally, Mr. Prina, working with Natana and Ellie, has put our Falcon 5 in several different languages. And so, these, we can pass these around after if you wanted to see them, they're, they're big posters in our windows, and they're just, they're beautiful, and we feel like it helps to include everybody at KCC. And it's just, I guess, you know, without Natana, we wouldn't have been able to do it because she did the translation. So that was a boon for us as well, and things are just moving along nicely.
That's great. Yeah, I'd love to see that, if you don't mind passing that out when you're-
The big ones are really cool.
Yeah, the big ones are great.
Thank you.
And those are just, we have them for lunch and recess and, and just the regular
Anybody have any questions for Coombs?
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Principal Val Strachey?
Good evening to the chair, members of the committee. Happy to provide an update on the opening of school for Mashpee Middle High School. It's been overly successful, I think, so far. We're almost a full month in under a new pilot schedule, so we're excited for how the students and teachers are adapting to that. I do want to recognize our staff and faculty for taking on this challenge of a new pilot and a new type of schedule, but it's one that we think will yield really positive results and outcomes for our students. It's interesting to note that, you know, our students are re-acclimating to school, and it's taken a little bit of time for them to get back into the swing of being in full classes, as for our teachers. So you see kids getting fatigued, they're tired, our teachers are, you know, back into a full swing. So with that, you know, brings some stress, but it also brings some excitement to see life back in the building, to be quite honest. When you're out on athletic fields, when you're in the hallways and there's a buzz and you're interacting with students in ways that we just haven't been able to do the last year and a half, it's really empowering, it's humbling, and it's exciting to get everything back and moving. So when you get up to the athletic fields and you see them, I was at a soccer game last night, girls soccer against Rockland, it was outstanding, it was a great crowd, it was a great game, and it just felt like school again for the first time in a long time. So it's just really heartwarming and exciting for us. We're really excited for a couple of new programs. You know, obviously, we know we added Wapanaak to our seventh grade cycle, and Melanie Roderick and Intuti have done an excellent job in really exposing all of our students to basic parts of the language, but also, more importantly, to the culture of the tribe, and I think that's only going to help reinforce the importance and help educate our students to realize where we are, where we attend school, where we live, and the importance and historical significance of that. So with that also being an exciting part is, is getting our flag poles up, our new flag poles up and to have those ceremonies, which Superintendent will speak about a little bit later, and really just kind of bringing that to the forefront of where it needs to be, and I think that's only going to continue to grow. Right now, in the, in the current Term 1 cycle, there's 23 students in from all backgrounds, and all the feedback has been extremely positive. So I'm super excited that we're able to bring that, and I'm thankful to the WLRP and the tribe for supporting that and helping to fund that, as I know it's, it's not an easy thing to do in this time, so really excited about that. Mr. Whedon brought an opportunity to our attention as well regarding the one-room schoolhouse and the Mashpee Historical Commission, and we're in the process now, we're actually going to be going down on the 29th with our applied technology teacher and students, and we're actually going to be completing a renovation to add the shed that was originally attached to the one-room schoolhouse. That was moved, I believe, in 1971, and then the shed didn't survive the move, if I'm accurate. But we had a chance to view Mr. Whedon, Mr. DeSorger from the Historical Commission, and it's going to be from the design all the way through the construction, that our students, Mashpee students, will be able to renovate the one-room schoolhouse, which is an extremely important historical building here in town. So a great, a great opportunity there. We do have a number of new staff that started and joined us this year, and I'm extremely pleased with their performance, their effort, and all they've been able to bring to the table, they've already begun adding to our culture. Our new dean of students in grades 10 through 12, Mr. Albert Mercado Garcia, has been a phenomenal addition. He has really helped us in so many ways, but students are very much responding to him as our faculty and staff, and he's brought a really good perspective with him to our team. But all of our new staff have been absolutely excellent. Our students, overall, have been, have been excellent, very respectful, compliant, like we always do. When we went into the year, especially at the high school, in middle school, you worry about the masks, and are those going to be an issue? And we pretty much just have a sign, go like this, and the mask goes up if it's sometimes going down below the nose. So sometimes it happens, just when we're talking, mine's gone down 10 times in just a couple of minutes. But the kids have been great in regard to the protocols, and, you know, Skylight presenting today, you know, those are all things that we're currently working on. We're excited for the Block 8 to really start to take its true form, whether they're going to be able to sign up and go get extra help, I've worked with the Mashpee teachers on that, and how we can do that, and also for contact tracing purposes, but also for, most importantly, data collection, as to how we're utilizing that time and how many students are accessing supports. Right now, we do have several that are zooming with students during that block, and we're starting slowly but surely for some of our clubs and groups to start meeting, at least that we have three. So it's, it's been a really good start. I'm excited to be in full swing at this point, where the acclamation process is pretty much, you know, complete, and just continuing to just do the best we can to support our students and families, and very grateful for the support of Superintendent and all the committee members for really allowing us to get up and running and be fully in person, and to be able to do what our students and families need us to be able to do to support them. do what our students and families need us to be able to do to support them.
Don, you'll think you have a question.
He's giving me the...
I want to make sure that I can be heard.
Yes.
Because I always get chastised for not being able to be heard. I was disappointed to read or hear about some of the activities regarding TikTok that had taken place at the high school. And I know you've made some changes to discourage that, at least related to some vandalism in the restrooms. I saw last night that there's now another one that is another challenge that's spreading across, and so I'm curious to hear what specifically you're doing to try to specifically educate our students so that they don't undertake foolish things that either hurt themselves directly or damage school property.
Absolutely, and obviously, this is a trend that's going on throughout the country. You know, we're not the only school that's experienced it. I do want to just caution that, you know, this is not a large group of students that are participating in this, so I don't want to paint every student with this broad brush. We have worked really hard in making some quick changes to curb it. Since we've made those changes, we've had no issues or incidents. Our supervision is excellent, our building managers are fully in swing, the relationship builders are fully in swing, and they're doing an excellent job. So for us, you know, I'm not going to speak to students individually, or their discipline, or that experience, but we've worked really hard to find out who is responsible, and we're working with those students and families to be able to educate them as to not make those types of decisions. We're never happy when a student makes a poor choice, or a group of students make poor choices, but our job is to make sure that they learn, not through necessarily punitive action, but through educational action as to how to make better choices moving forward. So that's been our approach, in a sort of justice way. And we've also held meetings with all six grade levels, and made it very clear what our expectations are, and that that behavior does not align with our values, and that students need to take care of each other and one another to make sure that if their peer is going to make a poor choice, that their students are there to help support them to make the right one. In regard to the recent challenge, and I'm aware of that, I actually just became aware of that this morning, it's a challenge that was actually in place back when I was a kid in high school, so it's not, you know, brand new to everybody, but it does involve taking over-the-counter medication in excess. And those are things that, you know, we always, in all of our programming, and all of our, especially our wellness programming, that we really work to educate students on how to, you know, not make those types of dangerous, quite frankly, dangerous decisions. So we monitor that. Our supervision is very, very tight right now at the middle, high school level, it will continue to be, because it has to be to make sure that this stuff is curbed now. So any information that we get will certainly act on it. My administrative team's always made aware, as soon as I find out about something, or vice versa. Our teachers are very comfortable coming to us and are our students. The nicest part, to be honest with you, when this was happening, were the amount of students that came forward to help end it. And I think that that speaks volumes to our kids as to how they have character in the decisions that they make. But that's stuff that we have to just kind of continue to address on an ongoing basis. So hopefully, it's curbed for now, especially with the vandalism piece. But again, I always caution that we're not going to, you know, paint every student with that type of broad brush, because it's a very, very, very small population of students participating.
Thank you, sounds like you are resolving it, so.
Working at it, it's a work in progress, but you never know what the next one's going to be, and that's a danger and scary part of social media, including TikTok, where these challenges just get put out there, and, you know, many of our students, you know, they don't always get to think it, and it could be just an impulsive action. So our message has been, you know, you don't want to have one impulsive decision that has an unintended consequence that is extremely severe and/or may close a door, opportunity for them in the future. So we've been very, very clear with that messaging.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. We're so lucky to have you, so thank you for everything that you're doing. It's, as I said, I have a middle schooler now, so I'm always, I love hearing what's going on there. I just wanted to tell you that one of my favorite moments over the last couple of weeks since we started school was my seventh grader bringing her notebook to me to show me how to say lobster in Wapenok. She's so excited to learn from Tootie, she's really just eating it all up, and they all are, and I'm just so grateful. I feel like it's kind of long overdue, and then exactly almost at the right moment at the same time, you know? So I'm really excited that we're able to do that this year, and I feel like the flagpoles, you know, the value of that symbolically, you know, something that should have been done, frankly, decades ago in this district, also long overdue, and I'm really excited to memorialize that with some ceremonies soon when that all gets done, so. But thank you for your leadership, I really appreciate it.
Absolutely, grateful to be part of the team.
Does anybody else have anything for Mark?
I just wanted to add, I did have the opportunity and pleasure to sit in on the grade level meetings that Principal Val Strati held, and I did choose today to speak to the seventh and eighth graders because they tend to be the group I most worry about in terms of their decision-making skills, so I was able to sort of get quite a few of my messages across to them that hopefully will sink in with several of them, as well as the opportunities that we have to provide supports. You know, we want to celebrate their successes and support them through their challenges, and like Principal Val Strati said, and particularly with these, you know, bad choices, it is a learning opportunity, and I really want to look at it that way when we try to, I mean, they are, students are held accountable for their poor choices, but we do want them to be a better person when they come out the other side of it, so I was appreciative of having that opportunity to instill some of my thoughts today with them.
Thanks, Patty.
I do have one other thing, and I'm, oh, I think I'll hold it for the Superintendent, so thank you.
So in the packet next, you have the report of, on page 11 and 12 is Consuelo Carroll's report, the outreach coordinator. I don't see her on Zoom, I don't know if anyone has any questions. It does show a healthy sales increase in column two on page 11, and that's a good thing. But if you have any specific questions, I know she did meet with the Southport Falcons, and we've come up with a lot of ideas of sort of ways to bring them back and increase their experiences. They have 100 new residents, and so we really are hopeful to, I think Dr. Hanscom and I will be visiting there at some point, and maybe in the spring we'll be able to do the bus tour, because there are a lot of wonderful things they need to see. But if you have any questions on that, you can either reach out to me or Consuelo. And page 13 is, 13 and 14, is sort of a new approach for the athletic report, and basically the bottom line, if you're at all interested, is at the bottom of page one, so page one is the varsity, page two has sub-varsity in middle school, you see the sports that are currently running, who the coaches are, the number of participants by grade level, upcoming games. So interesting, though, that total student participation in fall season sports is 265 students, and those are individual students, because you don't get to participate in more than one, which is 38.4% of our 691 MMH students, so that's a pretty high participation, and something we're proud of. Note, though, that there is also, if you are someone who looks for schedules online, it is a new, different website, so you can't go to MIAA anymore. Any questions on any of the data here?
I like the new chart. Awesome. You know, I love a good chart.
And the only other thing I had to say is, at your seats, was, is the September Mashpee Enterprise article that'll be in Friday's paper. You always get a few more pictures in this, because they pick which pictures to put in, so unfortunately, they never put all of the ones I want in there, so.
Did you get a new camera, Patty, because these pictures look better?
I do not have a new camera.
They look sharper somehow.
I will say that Mr. Davis's son might have been in portrait mode, as I recall.
Yeah, that is...
It just sort of happened, I wasn't playing.
Yeah, that's, that one's a great one.
Yeah, that's a good one. And tonight, when we're all finished, the school committee will be taking a picture with tomorrow's sign, hopefully, which is a really good message.
All right. Okay, Ashley, oh, yes, you had a question, sorry.
So I had a question from the Superintendent. It's in regard to the article that was in the Cape Cod Times over the weekend. I know I forwarded you a copy, but I'm sure you saw it since you had or were quoted in the article, and I just wondered if you could speak to the committee in regard to particularly your thoughts about it. So this had to do with equality and injustice of how punishments were being handed out to various students, and the article did cite a former Mashpee student who did raise some concerns, I think, in regard to at least their view of how punishment was not equitable. So if you could please respond to that, I would appreciate it.
Well, we were contacted in the summer related to that article, the data came from the Justice Institute on the Cape from an analysis. I can't speak to that specific student, although I did, I am quoted in there as basically saying there are different perspectives for every situation. What I try to instill, and what we try to follow in Mashpee, is that strong relationship building, and making sure that you're trying to get to know our students in terms of equity, and making sure that we are fair and equitable when we are disciplining, and making sure that you have fully investigated a situation. I don't like people to sort of react quickly and, you know, dole out punishments, I think it's really important that the student voice is involved and heard, and that a full investigation takes place, and then students are held accountable. But, you know, we're a small district, and we do continue, or I continue to message to our teachers, the importance of building those relationships, and once those are in place, that's the biggest key to making a difference for the outcome for all students. And then the more work that we do, and cultural proficiency with our teachers, and then sort of, you know, we'll be doing more work in terms of the strategic plan for, you know, unconscious bias and things like that, that they don't realize, sometimes they say things that are not in the best interest, and that sometimes could incite a student to do or say something that they wouldn't normally do. So bottom line for me is that we try to take our time if there is a misstep that a student takes, and that we also are trying to be as fair and equitable as we are with whatever the consequence is. I know it was noted in that article that we have a very low sort of disparity rate in terms of discipline, and I think that goes to some of the work we have done with MTSS. And some of our students who have choiced into Mashpee have choiced because of sort of treatment they've received in other districts, which, you know, based on what I know, and I don't know the full story probably, is kind of horrifying to me, but we do make every attempt to make sure our students' voice is heard, and that we help them learn from mistakes, and we are fair and disciplined.
Do we have a process in place to monitor punishments by various racial classes or ethnic classes?
We could definitely sort Empower School from log entries, I mean, individual teachers, that would fall on the principals of the building to closely monitor that, and make sure that there's not sort of a trend that needs to be examined from a particular teacher in terms of, you know, students of color and non, and, you know, white students, things like that. There's not, there's not a central registry or a Google sheet that everybody puts in, you know, consequences, but they are guided by the handbook, and ultimately, the principals are responsible for any of those more stringent consequences, would never be something that a teacher could. But I'm not saying that there aren't some situations where a teacher needs to sort of step back and look at their own choices that they're making. And usually, what happens if there's something that's really not sitting well, parents do let us know, and that gets sort of corrected the best we can through conversation with that teacher.
But I guess, bottom line is, right now, that's an informal process versus a formal process, or monitoring process?
Yeah, there, I wouldn't say that there's a formal monitoring process, there are guidelines, teachers are expected to follow, and then there's the handbook.
Mrs. DeBoer, may I step in for a quick sec?
Absolutely, Dr. Hanscom.
Oh, my gosh, she just like came from nowhere.
Yes, I'm, well, I'm calling from Oz today.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, because we can't see you on the screen. Oh, there you go.
Just believe me, you don't want to see me on the screen today, so. Mr. Myers, there actually is more of a formal process than I think Mrs. DeBoer was referencing. So our pulse teams at each building, they look at discipline data, and they work, they break it down by subgroup and look for trends over time. So that is actually something that's happening quite a bit, it's just, and then from the district perspective, I meet with the principals, and we look collectively at that as well. But it's not, I mean, I think you could see, I'm not a big fan of looking at an article in the paper and using that as sort of gospel, but if you look at our actual data, our data is the strongest on the Cape in terms of our discipline rates and our equity around discipline. So it is something we look at and take measures to address if we need to. So, Mrs. DeBoer, I hope that's okay, that's sort of my job, so it's, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
So is that something you can share to the extent possible with the committee in the future?
Yeah, the N is so low that we would not be sharing numbers with you, but we can certainly share feedback and decisions we've made as a result of that data analysis happily.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Great, thanks, Don, and thanks for that, Hope, that's very helpful. Patty, does that wrap it up for you?
That wraps it up for me, I think we're on to Ashley.
All right. Finance Director, call you.
Tonight, I'm going to be talking about three fiscal years. We'll start with FY '21. In your packet is the final expenditures and turnback. We have finalized FY '21 since we last met. We are turning back $641,455.99 to the town. This is due to COVID. We did not expend in certain line items, such as athletics or substitutes, this has been an ongoing conversation that we've had throughout the last school year. And the handout that I placed on your table tonight, it actually breaks it down a little more, there was, that's from the general fund. We also turned back $23,881 of our capital that we had allocated to us, and that's just because we didn't spend, the cost came in lower than what we had projected, so that was turned back. In the third line, you'll see a Cape Cod Tech assessment, that does not run through our offices, that's something that Cape Cod Tech provides to Mashpee, the town of Mashpee, and they allocate that on their budget, so they had to turn back a $27,000. Any questions about FY '21?
Where's the capital line that you're referring to?
On the second page.
Second page, thank you.
The additional handle. Oh, okay, that's where, I'm sorry, that's where it was.
And the second one.
So that's kind of annoying, though, we had, we had $21,000 of capital that we didn't use, but we had to spend 50 of ours to make up for the overestimate on the flagpoles and the underestimate.
They're two different fiscal years.
Oh, that's right, okay. So frustrating, okay, thank you.
In the packet, you have FY '22. On the overview of the general fund, we have had our first full payrolls in the month of September, so you'll be seeing those actuals increased a little bit from prior months. I want to really thank our payroll and HR office, they had to process a lot of paperwork over the last month, and they were able to get everyone paid on time, and it was a great success for them. One thing I'd like to highlight about FY '22 expenditures is, and you've heard it in the news, there's a shortage of bus drivers, and there is a shortage of just transportation in general. Luckily for Mashpee, that did not impact our general school transportation, so our big yellow buses. We have all of our routes that we had in the previous year, all of our drivers stayed with us, and we're very lucky, but it did impact us when it comes to after-school activities, the late buses, and also for our athletics, we're having a hard time, the club can't provide us all the... We're having a hard time, the Clabrook can't provide us all the transportation, so we have to go out to different vendors. We may see an uptick in costs because of that, I just want to let you know that now, but as we go through the year, I'll update you if it's something that's concerning. I do think it will, it might be high earlier in the year, but we might be able to flatline it as we close out the year. Moving forward, you have your grant update, the revolving account update, and school choice update. There's nothing different from the previous month. Do you have any questions on any of those? And then the final piece for FY '22 is just our COVID funding, that's also stacked from last month's packet. Moving on to FY '23, the administration has been in the process of completing the FY '23 budget that's due to the town on October 1st. In your packet is the memo from the town manager with the guidelines that he handed out to the department heads, as well as his timeline and the CIP template that we are using for FY '23. In the last month, we have worked with the finance working group to talk about FY '23, and we're on track to finalize that for the October 1st deadline. Any questions with FY '23?
So, a question regarding to FY '22, has there been any specific COVID funding or COVID expenses?
For FY '22?
Yes.
Outside of our nurse coordinator, we don't have anything that, like last year, no.
It's most standard DPW.
Correct.
The PPE, all of that.
So the DPW is incurring additional expenses related to COVID?
Yes, so there's approximately $145,000 that the DPW has projected for FY '22. That includes things like the cost of the trailers, the lease for an additional year, hand sanitizer and wipes, and MRF-13 filters. That does get captured by the DPW. If you've been following the town meeting process, you may have heard that there is going to be an article for additional COVID funding at the October town meeting. Right now, both, I believe, the board of selectmen and the finance committee have approved it, up to a million dollars is going to be asked for. What the town of Mashpee decided to do was everything on all of the departments in Mashpee was charged to this COVID account, and therefore it isn't a shortfall, and so they're going to be seeking a million dollars. As you can see from the turnback sheet, many of the departments had more turnbacks in FY '21 than they had in previous years, and that makes up for more than what we're asking for at town meeting.
So if all of the town departments, including the school, then is putting their COVID expenses in that bucket, in that million-dollar bucket, is the expenses then related to Nurse Stacy included in that?
Yes.
Okay.
And so again, this is a projection as of right now. We meet monthly with the town to discuss our COVID expenditures, and if things need to change and adjust, they're fluid and there's a lot of unknowns right now. We had a meeting today to discuss the upcoming months and what we're projecting, and if things do change, we will come back to the committee, discuss it at our school committee meeting, as well as with the town.
Hey, Ashley, can I ask you a question about this end-of-year closeout, the addendum that you shared for the town?
Sure.
So if I go to the bottom line total, that, so 3.7?
Yes.
Does that mean that that goes into free cash?
Yes, it needs to be certified, but yes, it would be free cash and that's where that million dollars would come out of, that's being requested from town meeting.
Okay. Great, thank you. This was very helpful.
The last piece that I want to discuss tonight is SRR 3. As you know, we have approximately $1.5 million of SRR 3 funding. We, that grant is due on October 4th, and we sent out our stakeholder survey on September 15th, and that survey closes on September 24th. 20% of that grant of SRR 3 needs to go to mitigating lost instructional time, which is approximately $300,000 of that grant. As everyone in this room is a stakeholder, you most likely received that email and read through it, there were priorities or potential priorities that were put in there for people to rank. Ventilation was one of them. One was to address the needs of the special ed population and diverse learning needs. Another category was mental health supports, and then the last category was professional development for educators. So all of these are things that, as the administration, we felt was important to put through the SRR grant funding. And so at the close of the survey on Friday, we'll be able to take a look to see what all stakeholders believe is important to allocate these funds to. Any questions on SRR 3? Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley, that was great. So next on the agenda is subcommittees liaison meetings and working groups. We did have a Plan for Success working group meeting, myself and Brian. We're, I think we can talk about that in the next, in new business, because we have some goals to review. Brian, I think I also, you had also talked, in that working group meeting, we talked about the town perhaps taking a cue from Falmouth in terms of thinking about a diversity and equity inclusion person at town hall, and we conveyed some information to Rodney that I think I just want to say publicly that, that he's going to review. So that's something we just need to continue to follow up on. But I think that was the only thing that came up during that Plan for Success working group that isn't reflected in the agenda. Is there anything else that I'm forgetting?
No, that was it.
Okay. And, Don, since I'm sick of listening to myself talk, do you want to do the finance working group?
Sure, so finance working group got together, looked at tentative FY '23 budget, which is actually looking really good, and I think is in line with the town managers' guidelines, at least so far. We also talked about school choice funds, whether possibly, if the initiative to move forward with putting turf on the football field and on some of the practice fields moves forward, whether or not that might be a source of funding that could be used. And third, we talked about the Wampanoag language program that was not included in the FY '22 budget, that we are getting or have received an invoice for that, and how will we handle that going forward for this program, since we weren't originally anticipating it. But I think, from the working group's perspective, it's early in the year, let's see how the budget plays out, and we think that the administration would be able to cover that within the operating budget. Nicole, was there anything else that I missed?
Well, Don, keep them in suspense on the school choice funds for turf, that's a big nonstarter.
We talked about it.
Yeah, but the answer was no. We cannot use school choice funds to, for any of the turf, anything associated with turf.
Right.
Just didn't want you to be in suspense on that. We did, we did determine, though, that, Ashley, wasn't there another question related to choice funds that we discussed at the finance working group?
For ventilation?
Yeah, for ventilation.
That it could be used for ventilation.
That it can be used for ventilation in all the schools. I think that, that's it. Are there any que, and I should say that the, the language that you mentioned, that was for the grade seven exploratory, that was kind of not, we were sort of waiting to understand if we had teachers and, you know, that couldn't be determined at the time of the budget.
Right, it wasn't included in the original budget.
Yeah.
Now, now that we know what it is, we think we can afford it.
Right. I think that's it for, any questions from the committee? All right, so new business, let's see, so we're on page, what do we do, 24 and 25 are the, is the Plan for Success? And then 26 are the draft, a draft goal and action items under that goal that the Plan for Success working group has sort of pulled together for your consideration. And so the first is to, you know, establish this working group and help create a system to monitor and evaluate our progress and the implementation of the new strategic plan. The second is to participate in diversity, equity, and inclusion learning opportunities. That's referring to us, this five-member board, and incorporate that learning into our practice as school committee members in the district. The third is to ensure that our annual budget and multi-year financial plan are aligned with the new strategic plan, Plan for Success. And then we also want to increase opportunities for student voice and representation to inform our decision-making. So I feel like this reflects our discussion that we had at the retreat. I did not receive any reactions to this by committee members via email since this was distributed, so we have an opportunity now for some discussion if, if the other members want to comment or have questions.
Yeah, I didn't comment before because, like you said, when you distributed it, I was like, yeah, that basically looks like everything we talked about at the first day of the retreat.
Great, that's good. Don, anything from you?
So I don't disagree with the items that are listed. I was hoping that those would get converted into a smart format, and maybe that's the working group's next step is to take these items and put them into a smart format.
Yeah, I think that's.
Is that what the intent is?
Yeah, I think those, that would come next. So we didn't want to do that until these were finalized. Right now, they're just proposed.
Yeah. And I guess I am still wondering in regard to the whole committee's role in regard to item, well, in regard to the monitoring evaluation in support of the plan for success and how the whole committee is going to be involved versus the working group. It's unclear to me. When I look at other schools and their goals and objectives that they have published, I can clearly see in some cases where they've had nice written goals in a smart format, what the committee is doing as a whole to ensure the success of their plans. And so I know this is still in the formative stage, and so once that's fleshed out, I guess maybe we'll be able to see that. That is a concern that I have.
Well, I don't, I don't, I can't comment on other districts, but I think we have a brand-new strategic plan that school committee members participated in the crafting and the design of the language, so I, I don't consider it time well spent to wordsmith a separate set of goals and objectives when we have our strategic plan.
But that's what you've done.
No, we've, we've just, what we've basically said is the role of the committee is to monitor, evaluate, and support the implementation of our strategic plan. And then the how we do that, to your point about whether it's the working group or not, one of the things that we discussed was, you know, having agenda items on our regular agendas that would be, you know, sort of checkpoints and progress reports on what the district has committed to for this year. So I believe there are four that the leadership team has emphasized this year, Patty, or three, I can't remember.
Yes, yes.
Do you want to address that question, or am I?
I think, yes, we can go back and, you know, add, add some language that would make these smart. I think you need to be careful as a committee of five that, of volunteers, that you are able to do this. I will have my own goals and they're aligned with the principals. Your goals shouldn't necessarily end up being my goals to execute, like on your behalf, and I think that what you've done here is really sort of established the importance of your leadership role in making sure that we, the employees of the district, are implementing the Plan for Success. So when you look at that first one, obviously the, the working group could create sort of a structure for this monitoring. But the second one is all five of you through your professional opportunities. The third one is really all of you as well, it might land a little bit more in the finance working group. And then the last one, I will be working with you on that, where we have sort of our eighth-grade person ready to come on board to be a support for, well, to, to report on middle school, and Skylar's going to ship just, just to the high school. So we would work on that together. But I think what Nicole said, and we, you know, one of the pieces you noticed already on this agenda is the inclusion of the four pillars of a strategic plan being ever-present in everything that we look at and see, and being able to tie different things that we report out on. You noticed Mary-Kate tonight in her report, talked about her MTSS PD that she is providing on a weekly basis with grade-level teams, so there's all kinds of little action steps that tie in, and that will allow you to sort of gauge as we go, and then we'll be reporting out more formally, you know, each year of this four-year plan.
But for example, I'm not disagreeing with the objective here to participate in DEI learning opportunities, incorporate those into our practice. I think that's a worthwhile goal, but without any definitive objective there.
Without any definitive what?
How do I know that I've accomplished that? Is it one morning opportunity, is it five morning opportunities? Is it five hours or 10 hours?
Well, it's also hard to quantify that at, at the start point when you don't know what offerings are going to be available to you. If you say you want to participate in five, we'll find you five. You've already done Calice Warnham, that's one. So if you're looking for it to be that prescribed, we can do that. You could add, you know, timeframes to, and yes, you could, you could add that each member's going to participate in a certain number, because when you go to the MAS-C, MAS-S joint conference, there'll be plenty of workshops that you should choose that are on, that will support our Plan for Success. And when you come back from that, if you all go to different things, that's really going to show a, a learning for the committee as a whole.
No, and that's exactly, the point I'm making is, is it those opportunities, is it, you know, participating in National School Board, et cetera? So what is the goal for us that we're wanting to try to achieve as a committee?
So I think, you know, the working group can definitely, if these are approved, we can, you know, make them a little bit smarter and come back and say, does everybody agree that you want to go to, you know, and this is a four-year plan, so what, what is your pace of learning that you'd like to participate in?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I don't see these as, I don't want this, you know, this is the work of these five people, you know, right? And, and we have, like, I'm glad that you referred to the four, so the, the ones that are our focus, you know, these strategic objectives on the agenda are, you know, we're supporting those with the goals that we've identified. So I think, I mean, what, to my mind, given the, the type and amount of engagement that exists between meetings on, you know, committee work, I, I don't see on, you know, committee work, I don't see the bandwidth that would exist to, you know, quantify these objectives specifically. But I do think that what we're committing to is the, I want to know if we're committing to these as goals. Are these the priorities that we want to emphasize over the school year? And then our, as my role as chair, I think, is to make sure that we are doing this. And so that we just have to keep that, we have to determine how we're going to monitor these. They could be through the working groups, they could be as a whole, they could be through our school committee agendas. They could be, I hate to say, oh, we have to participate in three opportunities when maybe there are six great ones that we can all do. I don't think we get any gold stars. We should just be availing ourself of every opportunity that we can. But I don't want to be super prescriptive either. I'm only going by what we've done in the past. Maybe, maybe that's the issue. But I feel like the SMART objectives are actually the ones that are in the strategic plan and the ones that the district leadership team has identified for this year. And ours are meant to be, you know, supportive of those. And remind me which ones those are.
So the district leadership team is, so it's not on here in terms of the objective. There are specific initiatives. Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, so on pages 24 and 25, like I thought.
Yes. Yeah, it is.
It's 1-1, 3-1.
We are doing 1-1. And then under diversity, equity, and inclusion, we are doing 2-1 and 2-6. Under the third pillar, teaching and learning, we are doing 3-1 and 3-3. And then under four, which is a Mashpee Connected Community, we're doing 4-1.
Right, okay, thank you. So our goal here is to determine whether these are, if this is the goal that we are adopting for 21-22, and then under that, you know, if these are the right actions that, that we want to take in support of that goal. Doesn't mean there can't be others, but these are the ones that we are going to be committing to as a team and periodically reporting on.
Patty, did I understand you said 2-1, not 2-2?
2-1 and 2-6. You can't, we just, there's a lot in pillar two, and although we want all of it done like now, we can't do it all. So for this year, we're focusing on 2-1 and 2-6. Not that some things aren't going to land and you could probably check a little bit off here or there, but, yeah. So you, obviously, with 2-2, have a piece of that in yours.
Right, right. But if that's not your focus, that would be our focus.
No, it wasn't the leadership team, although I will be, there are things I'm going to do that are increasing student voice. It's just we couldn't.
No, you can't do everything at once.
Kathy, Brian, do you guys have anything want to add?
So to Don's point, just as Patty was explaining it, so ours don't necessarily have to line up to what the leadership team has selected. Because like you just said, our goal, like number four of our action plan really goes with 2-2 of the pillars. So they don't have to match up. Like, we don't have to be, I guess in my mind, I thought we were going to support the ones that the leadership team selected. I mean, I'm fine either way. I mean, I think it's a very important thing to do. So if we're going to do that, I just was looking for, I guess, clarification that we don't have to match up with what you selected as the leadership team for our.
We don't, but like for your one about ensuring that the annual budget, you don't actually provide, you know, provide training to ensure a district-wide culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We plan that at the operational level and you support that through your budget approval. You wouldn't actually be providing the training.
No, 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 I understand that. I just, I guess I was thinking our action plan, like our action steps should kind of fall under the ones that were selected in a sense, whether we're, you know, not necessarily that specific, you know, as providing trading and such. But, I mean, I.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the reason, I think number four is, obviously, it's its own, you know, I think maybe it came up in our retreat and our discussions because some of us were involved in the crafting of the strategic plan and the Portrait of a Graduate. And, you know, that's something that we kind of heard. And so it, it's, you know, that's something that we can own and do in our, you know, in terms of our decision-making. But yeah, I don't think they need to be supportive. But I think we have to remember that if we were to pick four other things, I mean, we are, you know, the district leadership team is really tasked with implementing all of these. So whatever we sign up to do is really creating, you know, putting time and attention on that for district staff as well. Because this team of five works in the confines of this meeting.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
I think the idea also behind this was the fact that we wanted to focus on the pillar with diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we feel like if the administration has already identified two of the strategic initiatives, that the school committee should take up another initiative in that area. And that was kind of the discussion that happened in the working group.
That's a good point, too.
Yeah, I think, like I said, I think my understanding was we were going to support the ones that were selected by leadership. And if we're not, and we're going to do it that way, that's fine by me, too. I think it was just, you know, getting it straight in my own thought process. So thank you for clarifying that.
So do we have this?
This is down for a vote.
Yeah, we have this scheduled for a vote. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Mashpee School Committee goals for the school year 21-22.
All right, a motion by Brian and a second by anyone?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I really do think that, you know, this is a framework and should be then be brought back to the committee once it's fleshed out, no more particulars. That would be my thought.
I think you'll see some detail added as we start to, once we've adopted this goal. Any other comments, discussion? All right, so I'm going to call this for a vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right. On pages 27 and 28, the, you have a copy of the MOA for the block schedule evaluation at the Mashpee Middle High School. You'll see that this MOA is, puts the administration and particularly the Mark and his team on the hook to report to the school committee about the, I guess, an evaluation and recommendations related to this block schedule. So we had, the first time we tried this out was during COVID. We didn't feel like that was a good measure, measuring stick to put anything against. So Mark's going to be assembling, along with the association, an evaluation team that is going to, throughout the year, report, you know, figure out how to evaluate the block schedule and then report to us, I think, by May something, May 2nd. Do you want to say anything else? Did I leave anything? Uh, sure, yeah, that's a great idea. I think you need it on for TV.
So just to provide a quick update, where we're at, so obviously, you have the MOA in part view. And we are tasked with creating a committee that involves representation from all stakeholders in the building, all departments, all units of our association as well. I had the pleasure of working with Ms. McCauley, the Vice President of the Association, and we will have our finalized committee by the end of this week. Our first meeting will be next week. We're going to meet one Tuesday a month. And we very clearly worked collaboratively to lay out what the goals and expectations are of the group. First, you know, reading and doing scholarly research regarding the block schedule and its effectiveness, both pros and cons. But also then determining what data we want to collect and utilize to truly evaluate the effectiveness or lack thereof of this schedule. So it's been a really good process so far. I'm really grateful for the committee's support of negotiating the MOA. Appreciate the association for giving this pilot an opportunity. And I'll be able to provide monthly updates as we have our meetings. But the first is really going to be to establish what data we want to collect. And we're already kind of starting in that vein in regard to the use of Block Eight, looking at our attendance. And just this week alone, you know, our tardiness is down significantly, which is a really positive sign. Our attendance is strong. So we're just going to work on what data we want to use. Traditionally, use MCAS data. I think last year's a little bit of an interesting animal with MCAS, although we did have some really good gains in some places. So, you know, we'll work on that and continue to report back. But it's really a goal of having a really strong recommendation, whether it's to move forward with this exact schedule or perhaps to even look at a schedule that might be better suited based upon the data that we collect and analyze as a group.
Great, are there any questions for Mark on this?
Just to add on that, on page 31 and 32, which is sort of the agenda for the year calendar, we do have three dates that the Mark's committee would report out to you. So although they're meeting monthly, December 15th, they would give a progress update. And then it's March 16th meeting, they will give a progress update. And then May 4th, a final evaluation and recommendations for the block schedule from the team. So that was sort of the plan that we had for making sure that you were, you know, updated as they progressed.
Is that committee, how big is it? How many people?
So we look to, you know, committees of, you know, 20, 30 people are very difficult. So we look to make sure that we had at least one to two members of each department represented, as well as members of Unit C and B. And we'll also be doing some, and creating some surveys that include student voice as well in that process. So it's going to be representative of everybody. So right now, I think we have 14 members that have signed up. And right now, we have representation from all, everything we were looking for. So there might be a couple more that jump in. If there are more than two per department, we're going to, you know, go into a lottery and kind of go from there. But right now, it looks pretty good.
I'm sorry, you said it wasn't final till the end of the week, so that, but.
I anticipated no more than 16.
Okay. And could I request that we hear from different members of that committee throughout the, you know, so what Patty referred to on the calendar?
Certainly.
Just take some pressure off you to always have to do the talking and it would be, and who, is it chaired by somebody or?
So, so Ms. McCauley and myself will chair it. We're completely neutral parties in this process. And we're just there to facilitate the conversation, support them, and determine what data they want to utilize and collect and analyze. And then we could certainly ask for some volunteers to provide those updates on the dates to pretend they weren't provided.
Great, any other questions?
They don't, so far, so good. They've done an excellent job in trying to adapt. And we're just going to be as supportive as we can and hopefully yields a positive result in the end that we do what's best for kids. And that's what we'll do either way. We're not committed completely to this schedule. This is a pilot, that's exactly what it is. And it's a goal to determine what we can do to best meet the needs of our students.
Great, thank you so much. We don't, I, so as far as the general MOA for 21-22, that's really made necessary by COVID. That is, I just signed that today. It's been approved by the association, signed and finalized. So I guess we'll have a copy of that for members.
I will be scanning it and I will send it to all the members. It will also get posted on our website as well.
Great, thank you. Next, we have a vote on our joint meeting with the Mashpee-Lompinong Tribal Council. What I understand is a little different about this year is for the last three years, we've made these meetings, we've made them our regular meetings, and we've held them at the tribal council chambers at the Government Center. I understand that the proposal here is to really add a meeting that's just focused on shared agenda items with the tribes. So we're not going to be covering any of our normal business in this meeting, which would, would make it much shorter, hopefully. But it's going to happen, I believe, at the same time, 5:30 at the Government Center on October 27th. Did I miss anything? Kathy, Brian, Patty?
I think that was a proposed date. I'm not sure if that got finalized maybe from Brian's side.
Yeah, I had emailed Cassie. And I have to follow up, I think, with her. But that, I think, was the date, because it was either that or the day before Thanksgiving. Or it was like the Wednesday of Thanksgiving that were our two options. But, yeah, it hadn't been finalized, finalized.
Okay, so it's on here for a vote. Are we not voting then?
I would recommend we take the vote just to err on the side of caution.
Okay, because we can always change it if it needs to be changed.
What is the process for setting the agenda?
I believe Patty and we, we work with like what goals we had with the tribe. You know, like what was, I want to say that working group that the tribe comes and meets with the leadership team. Blanking on the name of it right now.
The partnership.
The partnership, thank you.
Has an October 4th, I think, meeting.
Yeah.
And I think we, as a group there, because it's tribal members in school, can work up sort of some topics. If we're only shooting for an hour and we can just focus on the partnership, I think it will be pretty productive. It doesn't have to have a lot of agenda items, in my opinion, but.
Thank you.
Okay, so more details on that later. But we, I'm entertaining a motion to add this meeting to our calendar for the purpose of meeting with the tribal council.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to add this meeting tentatively to our schedule for the joint meeting of the Mashpee School Committee and Mashpee-Lompinong Tribal Council on October 27th at 5:30.
I understand why you want to make it tentative, but let's just add it.
Okay.
Not as a tentative, because then we have to come back and vote on it as a real.
Okay, no, that makes sense, sorry. So then that, I guess, take the tentative out.
Okay, perfect. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thanks, Don. So a motion to add this meeting, seconded by Kathy, seconded by Don. Any further discussion? All right, Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Recuse.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, so speaking of meetings, it turns out that we have one scheduled during school vacation week. So we are, we are not going to meet during school vacation week, I think. I would recommend we cancel that meeting. And so that's just what this next vote is about. I'll entertain a motion to eliminate the scheduled February 23rd meeting.
So that would eliminate all meetings in February? So we wouldn't have, we would go from the 19th of January until?
I don't know that we've determined whether we're going to need a different meeting in February, but.
As we get closer, we could probably.
Yeah, I don't know why it was scheduled for during vacation week, anyway.
I don't, I don't know either. I think vacation week seems late to me this year, and it must have just never occurred to me because normally, vacation week always falls in the teens of February. So that was on my part.
So I guess what Don's asking is, are we going to have a meeting on February 16th? So, I guess what Don's asking is, are we going to have a meeting on February 16th instead?
So, just an FYI, many administrators will be at or away then, so that we would not be able to be present.
Okay.
There's a conference.
And is that true of the 2nd and the 9th, too? Is that why there's?
No, no, the 2nd and the 9th is, is fine.
So, I think, for the record, we all looked at this list multiple times, Patty, so it's not just your fault.
Well, you rely on me to do it, so it's my fault.
Yeah, but it never, it didn't occur to any of us that it was during school vacation week. So, I guess what we could, if for next time, could we just make a determination whether we're going to meet on, hopefully, the 9th, since our, I think our January meeting, we have two in January already.
Well, do you want to, well, maybe it's not worded that way, so you could vote to just change the 23rd to the 9th if you wanted to.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that because of the way the agenda's written. Don?
Well, it's far enough off, we can do it next time.
I think we have to vote, too.
I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, to Patty's point, it's far enough off, we can eliminate it and add another one if we determine it's necessary in February.
Okay.
Didn't, do we add the one for the 25th of August during the 11th? Like, so we were able to do it on the same meeting?
But it was the way it was worded on the agenda.
Is there a way to word it on the agenda going forward that we'll take a look as we get closer?
Yeah, we'll likely have, on the next agenda, we'll likely have a thing that says, propose the addition of a meeting. Yeah. I mean, what happens, I think, is, it's just kind of awkward the way that the break falls, because we always have two meetings in January because of the budget.
Yeah.
And, and so, it seems unlikely that we wouldn't need to meet at all until March 16th. So, we should, we're probably going to need a meeting in there. Sorry that didn't occur to me when I saw this on the agenda, but frankly, it didn't occur to any of us, so.
Good. I'm going to make a motion that we canceled the meeting for the 23rd.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Matt. Any discussion? Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so that meeting is off the books. Patty, do you want to say something about the new website?
Just very quickly, I just want to give a shout out to Susie Brooks and Consuelo Carroll. They did a tremendous amount of work. You know, it's always sort of sold a certain way by the companies that do this, but I was like, this is way, you know, an extreme amount of work from our end, but Consuelo plowed through, and so did Susie. So, there's still some tweaks to be done, and they're still looking at things, but in my opinion, it's, you know, so much better than what we had before. So, hopefully, you've had a chance to dip into it a little bit. I think we're still waiting, just an FYI, on two bios from two members, who shall remain nameless, but that would be good to add in there.
Great, thank you. It does look really good. I'm enjoying it. You, you want to talk about the Wampanoag flag raising?
Yes, so I think I said, you know, we meet weekly as an admin team, and last Monday, Monday of last week, it was that the flag poles were 10 weeks out, and by Friday, three of them were up at Quash. So, it's an interesting phenomenon. So, the, we want to make sure that we do a ceremony at each school for the raising of the Wampanoag flag, and we want to involve students. And so, we do have the three here. We could look at something during, they don't all have to be done at the same time, so we could look at moving forward for the Quash. The other two poles are supposed to arrive onsite at the company on the 21st of October, the 11th, with a target date of the 21st to put them up, to install. There again, though, we have a 10-week lead on the other ones, who knows? So, you, as a committee, because I would want you to be involved, need to sort of at least zero in on a date that you'd want to use, and obviously, we don't have to wait and do all three on the same day. Also, if we want to do something, I know November is a special month that might fit there, and as is Indigenous People Day, so. But the kids aren't here on that day, so I don't know if it's best to coordinate when students are in school in order to get all of our native students to be outside and be involved, and, as well as all the other students, too. But, and in talking to, you know, Brian about the tribal piece of it, because we'd really like to have, you know, drumming there and representatives from the tribe, adult representatives.
Mm-hmm.
So...
It's very exciting.
It is very exciting. But if you want, if you're thinking of wanting to do something as soon as sort of that October weekend, that's not very far away, so we would need to know if that's the direction to move in and when that would be work for all of you.
Are you anticipating doing all three on the same day?
Not necessarily.
Of the three schools?
Yes.
No, I mean, I don't know logistically in terms of the commitment of people's time, whether it's easier to just set up a schedule of doing each one on a different day, or setting up a block of time when they do go from school to school. If we do the school-to-school, all-one-day concept, we wouldn't be planning anything until November, probably. The end of October, we want to make sure they're all in, and then do it. We do have one of the flags, and I know Cassie was getting us the other two native flags, so we're good there.
I'll be honest, I kind of like the idea of incorporating it into Native American Month, but I also understand not wanting to wait, so I'm kind of torn on that one. I mean, I like, I also like the idea of having them all kind of separate on different days and doing it each school individually, but that's my two cents on that.
Well, I look at it this way. If we do it on different days, we get three celebrations. If we do it on one day, we only get one. So, I kind of think it's kind of fun to align it kind of with what makes sense at each school, you know? So, if there isn't, if you want to do it during this, I think first, we need to decide whether each of the buildings wants to do it during the school day or not. You know, with Quashnet being our, our election location, and one of the places that, you know, is a focal point for community members, it might make sense to do that as kind of a more visible town-type event and have the other ones be during the school day or something, but I, I think that's, I would love to hear what the leadership team recommends and sort of what Roxanne and her department and the tribal leadership think would work as well. But clearly, we can't wait until we meet with the tribal council to come up with a plan.
So, I can reach out and try to coordinate this. I, I mean, Mary-Kate's not here anymore. Obviously, Quashnet can go first. We could look at October 12th, that's a Tuesday. Students are in school, so it would just mean coordinating it on the tribe's side.
I will say, I do think it's important to have the school, the students there. I do think it should be an in-school thing, because I feel that the students who are part of the tribe, it's, I think it's important for them to be able to share that moment with their classmates. Again, that's just my opinion, but I do feel that it should be something, like a small assembly during the day. It doesn't have to be, you know, half a day, like, but I think it's important to have that piece personally.
I do, too.
Great. Okay, so, stay tuned on that, yeah?
Yes, you'll get some emails, because the 12th is not that far away, so I'll be reaching out tomorrow. Would I reach out to Cassie, Brian? Is that who I should go through?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We're running behind here, so I'm going to push ahead. So, if you have any suggestions or ideas on that, just send them to Patty. Upcoming events, page 33 of your packet. Is there anything you want to call out here, Patty?
The only thing is, on October 2nd is Oktoberfest, and the Mashpee Public Schools will have a booth with Consuelo and friends. So, if you're around at all and want to stop in and, you know, spend an hour there and, you know, greet people, you're most welcome to be there.
We're not going to scoop ice cream this year?
I don't think so. We didn't explore that option. I think that was the 4th of July thing, you did that?
No, we did it Oktoberfest, too, I remember, because we used Dutch apple and pumpkin and...
Oh, that's good.
Oh, yeah, that was a different one.
But now we've got, now we've got competing ice cream interests on the company, so I don't know.
Oh, that's true.
I don't know if that's legitimately possible anymore.
Mr. Myers might want to. I know he does a lot of scooping, though, that might not be something he wants to do on his day off.
Yeah, maybe you want to scoop on your day off.
That would be it. I just had a question in regard to the open houses and what the thought was on rescheduling those?
Yes. There, we did not cancel them, we rescheduled. That is a contractual night for all of our staff, so we're looking, or all of our Unit A members and B. We're looking to hopefully see a better COVID experience in the spring, and whether it's sort of an academic night, there'll be an opportunity for parents to come in with teachers present. The teachers have done other communications to families to let them know, you know, what the school day is like for their child. I think open houses are most appreciated at the elementary level, because they really want to know what their children's classroom is like and what their day is like. Not so much at the middle high school, most of those rooms look the same. So, hopefully, the directive to teachers was to make sure that either through their landing page or Google Classroom, or through emails to parents, that they have offered the opportunity to, you know, have more of a conversation about what the structure of the day is like for any families that want that, if they're not getting the information they need. But we will have some other evenings in the spring, I'm hoping, and we will call them like an academic open house or something.
Thank you.
So, I don't have anything else on the upcoming events to point out.
Okay, great, thank you. So, the joint conference, we've discussed it a couple of times, it's in Hyannis. We are all registered to attend this conference. They are still finalizing, you know, sort of like COVID, you know, mitigation measures and everything, but they're, they capped registration, and I think about 425 people in person. There will be virtual offerings as well. There are very few opportunities for us to engage with board members and administrations from other districts, and the fact that this is held in our backyard makes this a great opportunity for all the, all the school committee members in Division 7. I don't find the agenda, the conference schedule terribly helpful, but I'm hoping that gets more robust as we get closer. They're still finalizing a lot of stuff. The main thing I wanted to mention tonight is, you should have all gotten your report in the mail. If you are not getting mail from MASK, Matt or Brian?
I'm not either.
We're not.
I'm not either.
Okay. So, can we make sure that, I mean, I'm happy to do it, but I think it should come from Maria. Typically, it's the district administrative officer that sends updates to MASK in terms of membership. So, we want to make sure that gets out to you. So, I will find a electronic version of this, but basically, at the, at every annual conference, there is a delegate assembly. We designate one member of this committee to attend that delegate assembly. It's on Saturday. There are no other sessions taking place on Saturday that year, so this is the only thing that happens. It's kind of like a mini Congress of all the school committees from across the state. And you get to vote and help decide whether MASK, as an organization, will adopt these nine resolutions. So, quickly, there are, this year, there are nine. Sometimes there are 14, sometimes there are six. There are certainly ones of interest to us, and essentially, what we've never done very well, because I've been our delegate for several years, is theoretically, we should vote on these as a group, you know, discuss each of the resolutions, decide how we, as a committee, want to vote on that resolution, and then we empower our delegate to go vote on our behalf at that delegate assembly. So, this is going to have to take place at our October meeting, and, and what we, what would be very helpful is, and I think Patty and I needed to kind of get our heads together and devise some sort of way for us to smartly move through that agenda item, so it doesn't end up taking a ton of time on the agenda. And, and so, essentially, I just wanted to raise that. I'll, I'll get this to you guys, so that you can read through the resolutions, and then we'll have to, at that, when is the, I think it says here, when we have to nominate our delegate by, Patty?
I saw the email come through.
I didn't hear what either of you said.
Oh, I don't have that in front of me, I don't know what the date is.
I thought that I, I know it's in October. Anyway, we can't do it.
October 1st. Nomination committee, I'll request to be on the nominating committee or run for Division Office.
Yeah.
Is October 1st.
So, in the past, we have sent it in late if we need to. We don't have it scheduled for a vote tonight, but we will need to vote a delegate for that And I would love it if it were one of you, since I've done it several times. So, let's see if we can, if we can do something like that for next time. All right, so that's all I have on that. Anything we didn't know about that we need to discuss, Patty?
No.
Okay. Any additional public comment?
No.
Nothing? Nobody's here? Nobody's online? All right, then, this meeting is adjourned.